Okay.
Okay, welcome everybody to the March 22 Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education Meeting, and I have a motion to open the public session. Kelly, in a second. From Linda, from Linda, all in favor? That is everyone present? It is upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools at the board enter into executive session to discuss the status of an administrative personnel item. Bit of a motion, please. Motion from Linda, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? All of us, so now we will stop the recording so that we can continue our executive session.
Okay.
Yes, oh, we don't have to click anything. Again, okay. Welcome back, everybody. May I have a motion to adjourn our executive session and resume our public session from earlier? A motion from Kelly, and a second from Bill, all in favor? Is everybody, we rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Didn't do his open up for Knox.
As has been the case for the last few meetings, the board and a few are in the Jack Abrams auditorium, so I don't need to do the evacuation procedures because we all know where the exits are. Tell me when you're ready. Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education. Sorry. I'm not clicking on the right thing. At the Board of Education approved minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated March 1st, 2021. I have a motion. Motion. Michelle, and a second. Sorry, Xavier, all in favor? Hold on one sec. All in favor? I.
Minutes and transcription. Just a reminder, everybody speak directly into the mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have several, several FYIs on the agenda tonight, budget appropriation reports, budget transfers, claims audit report, revenue status report, any questions from the board, from the trustees? Okay, that brings us to warrants. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on March 3rd, 2021, and March 17th, 2021. The motion? Kelly, second from Bill. All in favor? Hi. That's everyone. Okay, that brings us to board member communications and announcements. Who has?
I have something. I just, I just wanted to say how, I think in since, for about since last year, things and things still aren't normal, but I felt the most normal when I drove through the high school parking lot Saturday morning, and there was the marching band in the parking lot, there were kids practicing, there was a game going on, and it actually felt somewhat normal, and it was just so great to see all those kids out there.
Anybody else?
Sure, I'll go. I'm gonna congratulate the mock trial team. The Huntington High School mock trial team made it to the semifinals, beating John Glenn, beating John Glenn in a very contested battle. It was just amazing to watch how these young team did so well against a very good team. We went then to compete against another team, Northport, that ended up beating us in the semifinals, but this is about the sixth year that Huntington has made it to the playoffs, made it to the semifinals. Just a wonderful group of kids, and honestly, as the coach, had a great deal of appreciation for what teachers are going through right now. Trying to teach through Zoom is incredibly difficult, but thank God for these kids that they're resilient. They, they watched our Zoom meetings almost every night. After being in class the whole day, it's just incredible, really, really amazing. It was heartwarming to see how much effort they put into it, and we will live for another year to try to win that county championship again. Bright notes from some of our past graduates is we've got one student from one of our teams that is currently at B C Law, and another student that has just gotten admitted into Cornell Law. So it's just a great, great program.
It's really impressive stuff.
Yeah.
Had the opportunity to watch multiple competitions, and they are incredible. I mean, it's as simple as that.
Great, anybody else? Okay, I just wanted to add something. I wanted to thank Mr. Polanski and his whole team for coming up with one of the items on tonight's agenda, which I know a lot of people have been waiting to hear, which is our update on the COVID situation and potential plans reopen. So I just want to point out to everybody that because of their hard work tonight, we will be seeing a plan presented. We will be discussing the plan presented and, you know, deciding on how to go forward. So I just wanted to point that out and give a shout out of thanks and appreciation because it takes a lot of work to put something like this together. And that was it, everybody else good? Okay, then to Mr. Polanski.
So thank you, Christine, and I'm going to turnkey that thanks throughout the community. First of all, a shout out to our teachers and staff across this district. This has just not been an easy year, and I understand that the last couple of weeks, as schools have started or start to consider their secondary further reopening plans, that everybody's anxious, everybody wants the kids back. We want the kids back as much as anybody, as much as everybody. It's just, it's incumbent upon us to do this in a manner that, that makes sense to do it safely, and we also greatly understand the mental health issues that have been associated with what we've all been dealing with for the past year. And I give a great deal of credit to this community as a whole for just being patient, and even if you don't agree with everything that has happened, i.e. timeline, that you understand that everybody's head and heart is in the best place that they can be right now, and I appreciate that patience. This is, this has not been easy, and there is probably more of this that we'll need to deal with, but we want to deal with it in a manner that supports our kids and our families in the best manner possible, and also minimizes risk. And those two things don't always go hand in hand. So once again, I thank you for bearing with us, and please continue to do that, because we are, we are working in what we believe to be the best interest of everybody involved. I know there has been a lot of conversation recently about the CDC guidance changes, and, you know, I, I know this is not exactly what everybody wants to hear, but the CDC does not guide what New York school districts do. It's New York State Department of Health, in our case, it's the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And the CDC guidance is not as straightforward as it seems. You hear reports in the media of six feet, now three feet, that we're hoping that that changes formally as well. But the CDC does have thresholds, and they also differentiate between elementary and middle and high school. And they kind of blanket it across the elementary level, but at the middle and high school levels, they are also looking at rate of community transition, certain threshold. So it's not necessarily an automatic from six to three based on CDC guidance. It depends on the level of positivity in a particular community and a particular region. And it's not always easy to determine. I know they have maps that can be looked at, but ultimately, we do need to take the direction of the New York State Department of Health that has not responded at this point, and the Suffolk County Department of Health Services that will typically respond after the New York State Department of Health response. So, so there is, there is no straightforward way to look at that guidance.
How, how long have they generally lagged the New York, New York State from the CDC, do you think?
It, it depends, I'm gonna say for anywhere from a week to a couple of weeks. Sometimes it's a matter of the governor translating what he'd like done to the Department of Health that happened with the travel quarantine, it took a while to get from him to the Department of Health. And we are, you know, obviously, there are concerns related to COVID, no matter what, but certainly if we're not taking guidance from the governing bodies in terms of health, there's, you know, there are other major concerns that the school districts have to deal with, or entities, businesses, everybody has to deal with. So we are trying to do this in the right way. And it's, it's not an easy process. And I also understand that there are more people now getting vaccinated. Obviously, that has not translated to children at this point, and I know there is speculation about when that may happen and what vaccine may, may be available to them. But as time goes on, we hope that that process will expand. I believe today, the governor announced that it's 50 and over, and that should open up the pool of those vaccinated even more so. And obviously, that, that makes a difference. It's, it's important to us to make sure that we are taking care of our kids. It's important to us that we are making sure that we are minimizing risk of illness for our staff and for our school community. And that, like I said, those, those objectives don't always go hand in hand. Alright, so we'll talk further about that shortly, a couple of other quick mentions. There has been a great deal of discussion about the state budget. We're gonna talk budget tonight, but just to, to let the, or remind the board, let the community know that this American Rescue Plan is the third federal stimulus package that potentially promises to solve a lot of budgetary problems, at least in the short term. Exactly what that looks like and how the state is going to translate in that into the current state budget. There's a lot of hope, and there's a lot of waiting the bells on to see what happens. But that is, obviously, we hope that the state budget is in place by April 1st, so then we can move forward with our revenue projections and can, for the most part, finalize the budget. But that is one piece of, of information, one large collection of information that we are waiting on to get to the point where we're close to finalizing a budget for the board to adopt and present to the community on May 18th. If you haven't seen the one house budget proposals, I did throw up a slide last week that just put out there some of the, the major changes from the governor's executive proposal. Just a couple of things to mention tonight, there is definitely a boost in foundation aid for school districts. There is definitely a boost, and this is, these are obviously things that are on the legislative table for discussion. Both houses included a premise for increasing the allowable fund balance that school districts can carry from one year to the next. I believe the Senate said eight, and the Assembly said six. Both houses would not collapse all of those expense-based aid categories into one, which would make it very difficult for us to project moving forward and also follow track of our expenditures based on, well, based on the governor's, based on the governor's proposal to put all these monies in one pool. Transportation costs would be reimbursed in both of those one-house proposals, and, and there's a, a large piece of, of both proposals that addresses a potential retirement incentive that also remains to be seen. Whether it's 55, 25, meaning 55 years of age, 25 years of service, or something slightly different that would come with a, a cost. It sounds like it would be up to districts to consider whether or not to adopt either one, not both, but either one or the other of those packages, and that's, that's a discussion that's going to take place at the state level over the next few weeks as well. So please stay tuned there. I also mentioned last week that the United States Department of Agriculture has extended the free meals program through at least September 30th. So we're going to continue through the end of this year and into September next year. And Kathy has also put together a program that's going to work with, with Big Lees and Witson's. Big Lees is the consultant, and Witson's is our food service provider to extend the efforts that we have been putting, putting forth to get some of the meals that we are preparing beyond our schools and further into community pantries, et cetera. So that's great work on, on her part. Assessment and accountability, we will address that, home requirements this evening as well. I have some information to share there, and just some, some other.
You're away from the microphone.
Looking, some other good news as well. We have secured two grants. Thank you to Beth for this. One is going to allow us to move forward and implement a new set of computer science standards, K through 12. And again, we are moving forward in this, in this respect with equity in mind, making sure that all of our students are able to secure a solid experience in computer science according to the standards that have just been adopted by New York State. And we've also secured an advanced placement grant that is going to allow us, again, to, to draw more students into the advanced placement program, potentially courses that we're not currently offering here. So that is something that's underway.
It's exciting.
In terms of investigation, absolutely. We've mentioned mock trial, sports, we've had our, our successes, we've had some setbacks. Our football team returned to the field this Sunday, and we hope to see them back in action on the field in interscholastic competition very shortly. And again, high-risk sports, this is the risk we take, and, and it's nobody's fault. These kids are doing exactly what they have been asked to do, and sometimes things happen, and we deal with them, we move on, and we, we, we work toward playing another day. But I do need to commend our, our kids, they are required to test, they do it religiously, weekly, they do it without complaining. They just want to be out there and playing, and I saw this all winter season as well, you know, seeing, you know, the girls' boys play basketball, and, and the fencers, et cetera. They'll, they'll do what is asked of them because they want to continue having the opportunity to do this, and we're right behind them. So thank you to the kids, and thank you to the coaches for, for their support in that respect.
Another lesson in teamwork, right?
Absolutely.
They just stick together because it wasn't anybody's fault.
Hundred percent. Our esports program is moving forward. We have a, a number of, of students participating this year, and that is something that may grow. It is, for those that, that don't know, esports is the video, there's a bunch of video games that I don't understand. I've tried to watch and pick up some strategies, I just haven't gotten there yet. But the kids are having a ball, and like I said, anything we can do to provide these kids with an outlet, something that they can enjoy, that's what we're looking to do at this point. I should also give a commendation. We had a number of students present, or had their work displayed this past weekend, and it's still on display in the Main Street Gallery, the High Art Showcase. Lauren Gooding, Lauren Gooding actually won an honorable mention, one of, I believe, four throughout the districts that participated in this, across the towns, actually into Nassau County as well. Grace Wildermuth, Gabrielle Tremboli, Tyler Basel, Ellis Satell, and Ava Brosnan all entered work, and all of the work was absolutely beautiful. So if you get a chance, if you haven't seen it on our website, you can go to the Huntington Arts Council website, and you can see the efforts that they put forth. It's, it's just incredible work for, for high school students.
Fantastic.
We can talk theater shortly, but you're gonna see something very enjoyable tonight. Hopefully gives you a taste and some motivation to stay tuned for other theater, theater productions across the district moving forward. I did have the opportunity to participate in the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Winter Institute a couple of weeks ago. This is something that I would typically travel to Albany for, it was all virtual. I, I was able to actually enjoy it from Monday morning through midday Tuesday, and I have to tell you that it just speaking to colleagues around the state, nothing else, hearing some of the trials and tribulations, and also the successes that they are having. While there are differences regionally, understand that everybody's excited to move forward. Everybody's concerned about what we faced. So this, while there are differences, there are definitely commonalities. And if you are interested, I will be participating on Thursday evening on a panel hosted by the Long Island Latino Teachers Association, talking about reopening and some of the challenges that we face. And I, I believe I've shared the Zoom link. Again, feel free to, to hop on and join us. It should be an interesting evening. I will be joining three other superintendents from across Long Island.
Their forms are usually good.
Yeah, they are.
There's people in the waiting room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get this one.
Okay. Even. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. That brings us to our first public commentary. As we know, the first public commentary, the first minutes are allotted for speaking on the topics which are listed under items for discussion and action. Each speaker needs to be a community member or a staff member of our school district. Each person who wants to speak should raise their hands, they'll be allotted up to three minutes. And please refrain from topics of personnel or naming students. And if you'd like to speak, you need to raise your electronic hand at this time. And there will be a second public commentary after the discussion. Please identify yourself as you are unmuted.
Oh, I'm sorry, should I go, Kristen?
Yes, please, Mr. Graber.
Hi, my name is James Graber. I am a parent in the district, a teacher in the district, and a president of the Teachers Association. And I just wanted to speak after last week's budget workshop meeting. I, I thought it was imperative to reiterate the needs for mental health professionals in the district. Even before COVID, the increasing number and needs of students seeking assistance from psychologists, from counselors, social workers has pushed the limits of the district's resources. With COVID losses, isolation, anxiety about the return to school, and myriad other concerns, the needs of students in Huntington threaten to overwhelm the system, not, not only in Huntington, but throughout the state and throughout the country, frankly. I think it would be prudent for this board to strongly consider the addition of mental health staff in this budget to better address the needs of Huntington students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Any other hands? All right, then moving on, thank you very much. Our first item for discussion and action is the state regional and local COVID-19 updates and secondary learning model update.
Okay, bear with me for a second because I've got to switch screens here.
I'm just trying to make sure that everybody at home can see the entire presentation as it's going, so let's give us a minute.
Okay, I actually have to share my screen first, bear with me for a second.
Take your time, don't worry about it. I am seeing it on my screen, just so you know.
That's a good thing. Just a, a couple of introductory comments.
Oh, there's somebody in the waiting room.
So I'd like people to be aware of the, the fact that our consideration of this did not begin yesterday. It did not begin a week ago. It did not begin a month ago. It began in, in September. Unfortunately, as the year began with the low rates that we experienced, and we look forward to maintaining those rates that did not happen, November, December hit, and we obviously ran into a, oops. It's not where I want it to be. We ran into a buzzsaw with respect to increased rates of positivity across the region, across the state, across the country, really. And at this point, we've, we've had some success as a region in bringing those rates down. However, for the past, I'm gonna say three to four weeks, we've been hovering in the four to five percent range. And today is a matter of fact in Suffolk County, I believe it hit 5.7%. I know there was a, there's, it typically happens on Mondays because they're reporting Sundays, and there's a lower number of tests, and more likely those that are getting tested are those that are ill. But that's still a, a rate that, that is concerning. We'd like to see those rates come down a little bit more. We also understand that the schools are not super-spreader sites, but there are concerns as, as the students age, as the students get older, and that's why there, there has, there has not been at this point the same consideration of bringing high schoolers back as there have been for the younger children. Not here, but across the country, each state has had its, its, its opinions on that. But just to give you a sense of some of the things that we have to consider in terms of, of bringing back more children at the secondary level, it's, it's, it's not just about classrooms, although over the break, the last break, not the upcoming break, we did place some furniture back in places where we, we knew we might need it in anticipation that we'd have to do this, that, that we'd want to do this and be able to do it at some point. But it's about cafeterias, it's about making sure that we are able to, we are able to feed children, to have children eat in, in a safe environment. Every room in this district has a seating chart attached to it. We need to know exactly where students are seating, particularly at the secondary level. If we are looking at tracing in classrooms that, that whole classes that are 40 minutes long, it is possible that you, you wouldn't necessarily have to, to quarantine a whole class. If there was a positive in one location, we need to know exactly where these children are sitting, and if we don't know that, it's going to lead to a, a greater number of quarantines. Room reorganization, desk placement, shifting of rooms. We've looked at this from top to bottom. Tracing process, the tracing has been ongoing. The tracing hasn't stopped since late September. Again, credit to our administrators and to our, our nurses who have done outstanding work here, and even the teachers who have had to participate when it involves children in their classrooms. And it's not just during the week, it's also us trying to gather information about what goes on, what goes on beyond the walls of our school, at home during weekends, et cetera. Staff controlling their space, this is something that, that, that has to be pressed, and, and they need to be reminded that if you look at the CDC guidance, it talks about three feet between students, but staff, the adults still staying six feet away, particularly at the secondary level, the staff have to be very conscious about controlling their space. Kathy has been looking at, we, we can't do this in terms of state approval, but looking at potentially bidding out 10 by 10 tents, that as the weather gets warmer, we can use more outdoor spaces. So, you know, all of these things have been music and art, physical education. We've tried to look at every detail, and this does not happen overnight. So, you know, it's important to, to, to me, it's important to all of us that everybody know that this has been something we've been thinking about, and no matter what we do, it comes with risks. So with that said, let me begin with the survey that was administered. I did collect this, this was closed on March 9th, I believe. This is the family survey, actually, did I skip a slide? No, family survey first. Total of 826 responses, the breakdown by grade level is there, it makes sense, two grade levels versus four, four grade levels in the, in the high school. There, there were two questions here, and I think each question brings with it a different level of consideration. So the first question, salient, if you had a choice, hybrid, five days, fully virtual, the breakdown is right in front of you, 23% hybrid, 65%, five days per week, and 12% fully virtual. The second piece of this, if the hybrid model was removed, would you prefer, or would you, at this point, there was no commitment, but would you select five days per week or fully virtual? And there's your 81%, 19% breakdown. You have to look at those two questions independently. Just gathering some information about school buses, that's another consideration. I did not mention that as I was listing items before. Obviously, with more students returning to school, there are going to be more students on buses, and we wanted to gain a sense from parents, we still have to keep those seats available to every student, but to give us a sense of how crowded those buses would be, and you'll see in both situations here, many people indicated they would not be using the bus in the morning or in the afternoon. You know, obviously, we're gonna have to gather a little bit more data route by route, but this gives us a sense of, of probably something we anticipated, that, that many people are not using the bus, but there are also people that did not respond to the survey, that the kids will be using the bus, and we have to take that into account as well. We are not looking to remove buses, we are simply looking to gain a sense of how many children will be on those buses and the concerns related to close contacts.
Because the number 827 is not that high of a response rate.
It is not. It is not.
And that, how, how, in what way did you or will you use these survey results?
Well, that's a lot of, this went into the proposal that's going to be made shortly. We also surveyed secondary teachers, and you'll see the outcomes here. First question was classroom teacher versus special area support staff, which makes sense simply based on volume alone. And then you'll notice here, and this is based on removal of the hybrid learning model. 53%, almost 53% preferred the five-day Fifty-three percent, almost fifty-three percent preferred the five day in person. Or play placing students in a position to choose between five day and fully fully virtual thirty. Now, my highs are failing me about thirty-nine percent to continue the hybrid model and eight point three percent with no preference. So that leads us to where where we are right now. And and again, this is a proposal based on the conversations that we've had, based on the things that are going on around us. And it's also contingent upon no setbacks. And I will tell you that we are not alone in this district with our concerns related to the upcoming spring recess. Was watching the news last night about what's going on in Miami right now. And, you know, it's those crowds that are potentially going to to bring us back to a place we don't want to be. And again, we want to move forward productively. We want kids back, but we want to make sure that we're doing this safely. So what we are looking at and what we are proposing this evening is a staggered process on Monday, April twelfth, with which provides us with a four day cushion following spring recess. We bring back students in grades eight, nine, and twelve, provide them with the option to return five days. Then the following week, we do so for all grades seven through twelve, and that would bring back in seven, ten, eleven as well. And you can see the bullet points here. And this is something I will ask for the board's approval on because this is a material change in the reopening plan that was initially instituted in back in back in July, really. The currents current hybrid students, so we we would technically remove the hybrid cohort. This would look a lot like what the elementary level looks like right now. The hybrid students would be shifted unless they let us know otherwise to the five day model. Should a current hybrid student wish to switch to fully virtual, they would need to communicate that with the school principal by Thursday, April eighth, and that's pushing it. But we do want to give people ample time to decide and watch what happens with these rates, particularly following spring recess. Also important that those selecting five days should lock in remotely if they're not feeling well, if they're quarantined, or if there is a family health concern. And we will continue what we have been doing in terms of of marking students who are logged in remotely as present. This has been the case all along. We are asking parents to keep the line of communication open with the respective attendance office at Finley and at the high school. And just a reminder here that those daily health screens are critical for us. If there is a symptom, the child should stay home, the adult should stay home. When a doctor says that I think it's a cold, excuse me, trying to get to that admit. When when the doctor indicates that it's probably a cold, that's not comforting enough for us to know that it is in fact not a a COVID related problem. So one second here. So please understand, we're trying to be as careful as possible so that once we start this, it's not interrupted at any point. A current fully remote students will remain coded accordingly, again, unless they would like to make the change to returning back into school. They can do that at this time as well. We'd ask for that communication again by Thursday, April eighth. Students wishing to switch their selection after April eighth should communicate with the respective principal, let them know we want to honor these requests, but we also need to make sure that the classroom is situated in in a manner that is able to accommodate as promptly as possible. So with that said, I think everybody has these email addresses, but to let the principals know that this is what you're interested in doing helps us plan accordingly and work with you to get you what you're interested in for your child or for the child themselves.
But that's only required, you're only required to send them an email if you are right.
Based on on these premises right here. If you're looking to make the shift of if you're currently not fully virtual and would like to go in that direction, we can do that at any point. If you're looking to come back from fully virtual, please let us know. We'll make that happen. Basically, Mary Beth Robinette has to recode all of these students from one cohort to the other. And and again, we don't want to put people in a situation where they feel uncomfortable under the current circumstances. But it's also recognizing the challenges that everybody has faced here, including teachers in the classroom, the staff in the buildings, the students themselves, as well as as their families. So that is what we are looking at. And and again, I want to make this very clear that I have watched school districts, school districts, there are school districts that are ahead of us with this, and I've also watched some of the school districts roll it back completely and be hit with having to change their plans because of things that have happened, not not in the school, but outside of the school. We don't want that to happen here. You know, once we get rolling and the kids get excited about this, the last thing we want to do is end up in a situation where we've got to pull it back. But I need to say that if there is a problem, we will pull it back promptly.
I have a question. Do you want me to start? Okay, can you explain how this impacts quarantining protocols?
And that is an excellent question. So I I have to anticipate. Now, one thing I can tell you is if you look, if you look at the numbers, numbers don't lie. Huntington High School has had the greatest number of COVID positive cases out of all eight schools in the district. However, if you compare the number of quarantines at Huntington High School to some of our our elementary schools, not even close, we've quarantined very relatively few kids. I say very few, but relatively few few children at the secondary level as compared to the elementary level. And that is because they are co-horted, they're distant. We know that building is far from full at this point. We are able to utilize during the contact tracing process the premises that they are masked, they are barriered, they are well distant. And we can identify exactly who, if any, they've been in close contact with at the elementary level at this point. If there is a a child in a classroom, elementary classroom, basically a self-contained environment, they're in there all day. If a child tests positive, in all likelihood, that entire class is going to be quarantined because of the length of time they spend in that room. And it's really by by guideline, a cumulative ten minutes that they are in contact with that individual, and it's very hard to say that that wouldn't have happened if they're in the same room all day. At the high school or middle school when they're changing classes, it may be a little bit of a different situation. Primarily because they're only in one room for forty minutes. So that's where the seating charts would come in. But we'd also have to look at this on a conservative level. And and if there is a question, the default setting would be we could have to quarantine, or we obviously would try avoid, try to avoid quarantining all members of any class. Once we have those seating charts and seating charts that are completely updated, which they should be at this point, it allows us to do that. But I do anticipate and answer and answer your question, Christine, that there will be more quarantines coming out of the secondary schools once this plan is implemented.
Last question.
I had a question related to quarantine. So earlier you mentioned what the CDC came out with, but that New York State has not made any modifications, nor has Suffolk County, and we don't know if they, when they will do that. So until they do that, the quarantine is potentially more children because it if they're sitting less than six feet. Right now, they have to be quarantined.
Once the guidance changes and also depending, so I I looked at, I looked very carefully at the CDC community transition thresholds. And based on, you know, honestly, if if we're looking at our community or looking at Suffolk County as a region, it may differ. I I look at Huntington, I look at Huntington Station. Actually, the numbers are quite similar. It looks like they would fall into the a substantial transmission orange zone. And this is just me looking at numbers based on what Newsday prints. We we don't have, I'm not receiving numbers for our our community on a on a daily basis. That is not the highest. It is actually third. There is a blue low transmission zone. There is a moderate transmission yellow zone. There is a substantial transmission orange zone and a high transmission red zone. It's based on total new cases per one hundred thousand persons in the past seven days. And based on I looking at today's numbers, we'd fall into orange, we'd fall into about anywhere from from sixty to seventy in that range. And it looks like in middle and high schools, three feet could be sufficient. And and again, if New York State takes CDC guidelines and adopts them verbatim, three feet could be sufficient if the school was in a community of low, moderate, or substantial transmission, just not in that high red zone. That can change in a heartbeat if if the wrong thing is done during a spring recess. So we have to continue monitoring this and and being as as careful as we have. We were in probably closer to the median in terms of positive rates back in December. And then when we came back from winter recess, we had that. I I believe it was that one week that we pulled everybody into a remote setting and we I don't want to say anything, but we we have been well below the median since that point. And I'd like to keep it that way. I want our kids here. I want them safe. I want their family safe. I want my staff safe. And that is, that's a tall order, but ultimately, that that's that's our goal, you know, as well as provide the kids with what we know they need educationally and socially and emotionally.
Can I ask more about that quarantining? Just move the mic closer to your mouth. Sorry, close enough. Yep, I think it's the mask. So just thrilled. I have one of those high schoolers who desperately needs to be back in full time. And thank you for all the consideration and and well-thought-out plan. My question is, if the Department of Health doesn't change, they would have to change their definition of a close contact, right? As it stands right now, I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, if the student tests positive, then it would mean for each of their eight or nine classes, potentially four students around them that would have to quarantine, right?
Well, depending on the the way the room is situated. Right. And obviously, one of the things that we will work to do and and my observations, particularly at the elementary level at this point where there are more kids in classrooms. The idea is to to separate those desks as far as you can. Some rooms are close to six feet, some rooms are less than six feet. It depends on how many children are back. And I can tell you that a lot of our elementary children are back at this point. And if there is one of the CDC recommendations is to make sure that you you don't have anything in that room that's not needed, and you have those desks as far apart as possible, again, in academically sound manner, not have kids hugging the wall or the or the the smartboard in front of the room, but to make sure you have ample distance, as much distance as you can provide side to side, front to back. Now, I do believe we can accomplish the side to side six feet regardless. It's the front to back that becomes challenging, assuming we're we're estimating correctly with the number of secondary students who have returned. And the barriers do help us there. So we are permitted to do this with the barriers in place. So there's been a lot of discussion about six feet. Well, you can't go, well, you can do it with the barriers in place, and that has been that has been documented. We we do not want to take the barriers away regardless at this point. But if the CDC guidance is adopted by New York and 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 they do similar to what the CDC has on paper here, then it may be within three feet instead of within six feet that you have to start looking at close contacts, but we're not there yet. And until that, that may reduce the number of close contacts when that happens, but until it happens, we can expect there to be, when a positive case occurs, more students quarantined than there are now. And we'll have to look at the bus. Now, the idea is to keep again, you can have family members sitting together, but looking at these bus routes and and, you know, there may be a situation where we haven't really had to do much much of bus quarantining at this point, but that may be something else that increases as well. So quarantining is is really a big question at this point.
The cafeterias will still be standalone.
Seats, that's with barriers.
Standalone seats, that didn't make any sense, but you all knew what I meant.
The idea is the the recommendations have always been to have that you want desks in cafeterias with the shields, but even in places where you don't have desks, have students facing in the same direction so that they are not talking at each other. Which is something that, you know, even in in rooms where there are tables, there are barriers, but we still have students facing in the same direction. And I I have to tell you, just going through this with Tracy Rothel and Brendan Cusack, who have been, you know, obviously champions of this, but also champions of keeping our students safe. They have they have been instrumental in in helping us get to this point. So I would like to acknowledge both of them here as well. And their teams.
Yeah. No one does this alone.
Jim, does the disinfecting process change because we are more students in the buildings?
You know, it it it's going to remain intense, and I will tell you, and and I'm I'm pleased to say this, when when I'm observing a classroom, they they don't necessarily know I'm in the room. Custodians are coming in, they're wiping down knobs, they're 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 trying to keep surfaces as clean as possible. Now, we do know at this point that surface is not necessarily the the prime manner in which this virus is going to be spread. But and I can tell you, it drives me crazy because the the electrostatic sprayer, it leaves a film. It's a safe film, but it does leave a film. It's a salty film. That's what the resulting product is. It's basically salt water. When I see it, I know it's been done and it makes things look cloudy, but normally that would drive me crazy, but knowing that it's there makes me actually feel more comfortable because our our buildings are brown step. Again, another group that needs that needs to be commended here because they have been doing absolutely incredible and very consistent work since since last March, really, they haven't stopped.
And have I just out of curiosity and concern, have they been well themselves? Like, have we had a lot of quarantining with the custodian?
Oh, we've, you know, it happens on occasion. You know, we've we've been fortunate where even people have come down with the virus, have not gotten particularly ill. You know, it's happened, but not often. One group that's been hit, you know, much harder than than any other. We've been able to keep our heart, but no numbers are low, but we've been able to to keep it
From stacking.
Relatively low.
Do you have a threshold in mind of when you would have to pull back on the opening date? You mentioned the zones for our town separate from the Suffolk County rate.
Well, it's it, I I don't want to toss a number out there per se because we do know that the spread in schools is not going to be as significant as spread in the community. But I will tell you what what schools, the metrics that schools are using is they're looking at what's happening at particular grade levels and what's happening in particular buildings. That's when schools have pulled back, even when it starts outside. Once it comes in, particular schools had to had to shut it down this past weekend. There are a hundred and thirty-five students quarantined. I don't know if that's one grade level or multiple grade levels, probably multiple. And and we run the risk, you know, that, listen, I think the kids are doing a great job with these sports, but when they're that close to each other, it's it's easy for them to easier. That's why they call them high risk. It's easier for them to spread and it's easier for them to to potentially catch it from competitors. So, but I think honestly, sports program has been a success because of the care the kids are taking. They want this and they want to make it work. But that doesn't mean that things can't happen in an unanticipated manner, and we're going to continue to look at our school metrics, the community metrics. We we, the reason we shut down that week after spring recess is the the regional rate was at almost thirteen percent. And to be honest, it was the right thing to do to go remote for that week because it kept us from quarantining up and down that weekend. By the time the next week was upon us, it started to, it started to creep down back into single digits. And it kept coming further down in that direction. So there's no, there's no one measure to look at, but we're certainly going to trace very accurately and and look at what what's happening in each of our buildings at every grade level. If we see a cluster in a class, we're gonna, we're gonna take action immediately. My hope is that right now the numbers four and a half, I today, I hope was an anomaly. We we want to get these numbers back into the threes, twos, ones. Want to get them to zero. It's going to take time, but it still requires attention. And we'll give it that attention here.
Bill has a question.
Can you describe to us, Jim? There's going to be one week when we start bringing, when we basically eliminate the hybrid model for half of the secondary grades, and then the next week they're all back. How do you anticipate that, you know, transition week going? You know, some teachers may have a greater proportion of students in those grades, right? Because still, you'll have, you know, certain classes that are, you know, preponderance of students at a certain grade. I mean, it seems like I just I just want to see if I'm over. I know you've thought about this a lot more than I have. Okay. And it seems logical that if you want to transition doing half and half, but are there any other things that we're overlooking as far as nuances to the logistics of trying to get all the kids back in? And importantly, the staff back in safely and getting, you know, the logistics of how kids are moving through the hallways and stuff like that.
That that's the the latter is the biggest reason for the stagger here because there was much less control over what happens in hallways. We did get the question about lockers. We are not going to to open those lockers. We we can't put the students are going to have to be diligent in terms of moving through the hallways promptly and not hanging around. I mean, they're doing it now. So again, moving along and not not spending time with others in the hallway that that will prevent a big chunk of the problem. In the classroom, much more controlled because the seats are in a fixed position. The kids are surrounded by barriers. Yes, some grade levels are going to have more kids back right away. But I think the the hallway concern is one that we we'd like to see that work and work well before we bring the second half of of the of the group back. And we've selected carefully here. Not that there's any right way to do this. Obviously, we we want to give our seniors a chance to come back. Freshmen being the newest grade in the building and a lot of core classes there, eighth graders taking regents exams at the end of the year. Like I said, there's no perfect way to do this, but I think the biggest concern, Bill, in terms of why split this in half is is the hallway piece, and we want to make sure, we also want to be able to troubleshoot during week one and fix anything that needs to be fixed before week two. It's like, it's not a lot of time. But rather than just open it, I I do think students are going to come back even possibly from fully virtual because they're going to be excited about everybody else coming back. even possibly from fully virtual because they're going to be excited about everybody else coming back. We just want to make sure that what we're doing is we want to, we we want to evaluate it for a week and and troubleshoot as needed and make sure that what we do is done within integrity.
Yeah, I feel that there are some fully virtual students who just wanted it one way or the other, and that's why they're fully virtual. So they might choose to come back. What about the temperature scans? Are you going to continue that? Will that be a problem in the entry of the building or?
Don't necessarily see it. At this point, it's it's down to a science. I mean, you see how quickly you can walk in and scan the daily health screenings. They do tell us a lot of the, again, we've had issues where I'm going to say it happens on occasion where where somebody does not feel well, but doesn't think it's COVID. And now you have, you know, adults being vaccinated, which may factor into people's decisions, but help us all if there is anybody with, if if a child has a symptom, they need to, they need to stay home. Because the potential for it to be something more than a sniffle or a cold is is always there. And if it's if it if it does happen to turn out a PCR test or or rapid test does tell us that it's there, the potential to infect is high. And you're, you know, obviously, we haven't talked about variants, but they're out there and there is concern that they are more easily transmitted. And a lot of our children, when they have it, they are asymptomatic, so they don't even know that they're carrying it, which is which is good in one respect because they're not getting sick. But they also have the potential to infect others, particularly adults, staff members. And we've had issues where, you know, staff members out, teachers out of that classroom for for 10 days. And that's, that's not what we want.
I have one more.
Bill has another.
Do we have any idea, Jim, even if anecdotal, on what percentage of our instructional staff or support staff or all those people in the building that are going to be dealing with the, you know, greater inflow of students have, will have been fully vaccinated by the time we start increasing the numbers?
I can't tell you that primarily because when we started to collect that information, executive order two oh two ninety six came out and stopped us from doing that immediately. It was going to serve two purposes. Obviously, it was going to serve their purpose, but it would also let us know that if a teacher was a close contact, and now we're just asking them the question. If you're a close contact, if you can show that you're two weeks beyond your second vaccination, you would not necessarily have to quarantine unless, of course, you're symptomatic. I I do believe that a number of our teachers are vaccinated, but I can't give you an exact percentage.
That's why I threw the word anecdotal.
So they'll just say.
That's why I threw anecdotal in because I know that's about all you're going to get.
I I can tell you that a good chunk of our mental health staff and our health staff have been vaccinated. A large portion of our special education staff has been vaccinated. This is not just teachers, this is staff. And I know many others have been provided with opportunities for the vaccination. I like, I wouldn't want to throw a percentage out there, though, because it would be a, be a true guesstimate.
Will that, would that apply to students who are vaccinated? That a student who is vaccinated, would they have to quarantine or?
The same would apply to them if they're 18 years old and they've got, and they've got two two Moderna vaccines, and it's been more than two weeks. Same as an adult, but we'd have to see.
Yeah, there are children 16 and older.
We're not using this information for anything more than than we we need to know who to quarantine and and when. But as time goes on, and this is the other benefit to doing this a little bit later, is that you're providing a chance for more people to be vaccinated. And as I mentioned, and as you know, today, it's 50 or above, which opens up and now the supply is becoming less, less of an issue. I know, I believe today AstraZeneca is joining the the now quartet of vaccines that may be available. I'm not, you know, certainly not passing on what should or should not be done. But the product is is not in as short supply as it was when we first started this rollout.
And isn't there also part of the quarantine rules that if you've recovered within a certain period of time, you also don't have to quarantine, or is that not a rule?
Thirty days. So if you if you if you've tested positive and you're recovering, you have 30 days from the date of return where you wouldn't necessarily have to test again. And that comes to us direct from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And that mostly applies to student athletes because they're testing every week. So if somebody tests positive, they wouldn't necessarily have to go, because first of all, it could still, they they could still test positive, but after that that 10 day period and they're asymptomatic, the county is deeming them free and clear for 30 days.
Okay, well. We don't have a resolution here.
No, this would just be a a motion to you'd have to make a motion, we'd have to.
Okay.
I didn't want to put the resolution, a resolution in or the motion in the event that this was modified.
Okay, so I'll ask then for a motion to approve the proposed timeline for secondary return to five days as described by Mr. Plansky here in his presentation.
Got to join?
Is that it?
And she's got to kind of enter the motion as you go.
So do you, do you want to let me know when you want me to ask for the motion? Okay, so can I have a motion? Xavier and a second from Michelle. Any further comments? All in favor? That is everyone.
And not that I want this to happen, but this does come with the authority.
To, right, exactly as you presented it, with the authority that it's contingent upon those setbacks and that you could put a pause on it.
Please, everybody take care during spring recess. Again, for those who need this, this is going to be what I'm going to do is send a letter tomorrow, and it will contain all of this information and these email addresses, but these are easy enough to find.
Right. I feel like if we were in person, there would be applause right now, but, okay. Moving on to the state assessment and accountability updates.
Okay, bear with me for a second.
Wait, it's not the record button. We skipped the first two.
What's that?
I thought the red was the record button.
Is there something? Did she skip something?
The drama club presents.
Oh, that time, move that down.
And that's number four. We're only on number two. Right? I'm not looking at the right agenda? It was different, right?
I I did change the order.
If you refresh, they'll probably give you.
That's why I didn't refresh. Sorry.
Was that the one you had open for when you're home?
No, okay, oh, whatever.
You good, Michelle?
I'm good.
Good.
Sorry.
The next group of items here. Okay, so last week, I believe it was Monday, the Board of Regents met to discuss the assessment slash accountability waiver that was submitted to the United States Department of Education. Even before that conversation was held, our new Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, indicated that there will be no blanket waivers for cancellation of spring assessments. They have not formally responded to New York State's waiver at this point. So there is still a good deal of question attached to this. But rather than reinvent the wheel here, what I'm going to do is open this up and just go through some of the caveats. This is quick, but just to give you a sense, and this is primarily related to diploma requirements and secondary exams, Regents examinations. But I'll also mention that if the blanket waivers are not granted by the federal, by the by the federal head department, by the USDA, there are certain things that we are obligated to do by the Every Student Succeeds Act. Before we even get to this, the three through eight assessments, it is a federal requirement that they be administered every year. So if the waiver to cancel them is not granted, we would have to administer them and they would be shortened. There would be one session of ELA math and science administrable. ELA and math is three through eight, and science is grades four and eight. We'd have to administer that one session. So that is, that is not covered in what I'm about to share, but understand that that's out there as well. And those assessments actually began, Beth, correct me if I'm wrong here, it's the week of April 19th. Okay, so we start at that point. But this is going to address what exit requirements are in place and how the Regents exams would be treated, so.
There's somebody to admit.
Okay. All right, so this just very briefly goes into some of the areas where exemptions could be granted, Regents examinations, pathway assessments. Rather than go through each on this slide, I'm going to hit each one of them independently and in no particular order here. One of those pathways, the CDOS commencement credential. Some of our our students with disabilities and others may graduate with this credential in place. Obviously, there are exams that are required here, but if the if the waiver, there there are two different waivers here. The waiver that is on the table right now is cancellation of all assessments. If that is not granted, there is an alternate waiver, which I'll talk about in a second, but there there would be no it's a, it's a hold harmless for students with respect to this pathway. So even if they pass their courses, exam or no exam, they would still earn that credential. Okay, so basically what they're saying is and I'm going to summarize it in as succinct a manner as possible here. If a student is currently enrolled in a course of study that culminates in a Regents examination, and by the end of 2021, they have earned the credit for the course, they will be eligible for an exam, an exemption to the Regents examination requirement. That's exactly what happened last year, and whether we administer administer those exams or not, that exemption will not change. But this also applies to students who were previously enrolled in in a course leading to an applicable Regents exam. If if they've now achieved that course credit, but has not yet passed the associated Regents exam, but was intending to take the test, or we had planned for them to take the test, they would also be be exempt. And obviously, this applies also to those in eighth grade who are scheduled to take either Algebra I or the or Science Regents examination. The examinations that are in question here, and I believe that is addressed as we move a little bit further down the presentation here. The examinations we're talking about here that are federally federally required, a student must test test once in math, once in English, and once in science at some point during their high school career. We go beyond that, New York, there are more requirements, state requirements, but those are federally federally required. And what New York State would be looking to do if the blanket cancellation was not granted is to administer just the ones that they have to administer.
And the reason there are two science exams on the list is.
Well, they'd have to, they'd have to be one of those two science exams.
Right.
But I understand, you know, in in terms of assessments, that the the problem, and I've stated this before, the problem I have is more with penalizing students for a pandemic, penalizing educators for a pandemic, and using data to penalize schools for pandemic. It is ludicrous and makes no sense at all. Data from these exams, if it was used internally, not to penalize students, not to penalize teachers, not to penalize principals, not to penalize schools, it could be of use to us. And I give you an example of of eighth grade algebra. We instituted a program. We had every student take algebra last year. None of them took the algebra regions. We want to make sure that we're doing what we can for students. We want to make sure that our instructional program is is targeted in the right way. We want to make sure that we're assisting students in the most comprehensive manner possible. And not today, but there'll be a future meeting not too far down the road where we're going to look at how we look to make up some ground with our middle school algebra for all, with our middle school program, just to make sure that we're we're not going to leave students behind here. And Beth, and I know Beth and Tracy and Dr. Gosani, our new STEM director, have been working diligently to come up with an idea that will help us to make sure that we can make up some ground here. And this, that's just one example. But there there can be some value in exam data, but not when it's used in the wrong way. There will also be concerns about Regents exams with respect to advanced designation and honors diplomas and seals of biliteracy. And again, if the exemptions are granted, whether it be a blanket cancellation or the backup plan that New York State has, success in the course would qualify the students for the advanced designation honors. That's where that flexibility comes in here. I'm going quickly here. This is, this is going to be, remain posted. Science lab experience. For those that don't know, as a former science teacher myself, this has not changed in decades. There is a requirement for student completion of 1,200 active lab minutes, meaning you must do a total of 1,200 throughout the year. Laboratory laboratory exercises that are hands on in nature. There's obviously flexibility being provided there. Considering we haven't been able to touch a lot of anything since since the beginning or since the end of last school year. And we've had to be flexible with the types of lab activities that we are using and what we can put in front of students as as a genuine hands on experience at this point. So there's flexibility there. There is an option, and we we've got to do this very carefully. But if a parent, for example, last year did not want their child to graduate without having taken the Regents exam, they could decline the exemption, and the child would not graduate until they took the exam and passed the exam. I do not believe that any parent submitted or declined the exemption, but that is an option that we must provide 30 days in advance of the administration period. We did that last spring. We did it this fall for those who graduated in January, and we will do it again for students who are slated for graduation this this spring. And again, while we don't anticipate, many would take advantage of this, take advantage is maybe not the word I was looking for. But the but the option is there, and there may be a reason that this is requested, and it's certainly something that we would honor.
There's a person in the waiting room.
So as I mentioned before, if the United States Department of Education, USDA, grants the assessment waiver, June and August exams will be canceled. That is the waiver that's on the table right this second. I know for a fact, and Betty Rosa and Chancellor Young have been very clear about this. If that waiver is denied, this is what it looks like. The department will administer, and we will be required to administer only the Regents exams federally required under ELSA, ELA, Earth Science and Living Environment, and Algebra I. It would only be June, and obviously, the exams required for an advanced designation are not on that list. So if students pass the course, they would still be eligible for that for that advanced diploma. A lot of our students do earn it, and they they would earn it by passing the course and and doing well in the coursework throughout the year, passing grade at the end of the course. There will be no August exams. So this is just a June experience at this point. I'll call this the the alternate waiver if the blanket is not is not accepted. So this is something they they it took a long time to consider, knowing that the federal, the the Federal Department of Education was not going to accept the blanket waiver. And that's not just New York. It's every state across the nation is required to do the same thing. And and most are looking in the same direction that New York is. But again, you can see the timeline here. It has been met. So we have been communicated with, which I certainly appreciate. Also attached, I'm going to close this. Actually. Let me go back to the item in board docs. What I've attached here, and this is for the board and for the public. The presentation that I just made is, it's linked, it's also attached here. And there was an FAQ released on Friday that answers a number of of questions related to the exams. There is a hold harmless in place here, and it is included in the FAQ document. If a child takes the exam, the child, the child, the family would be offered the decision as to whether or not they would like that exam placed on a transcript. So if they do well, it would obviously be in their best interest to include it. And if if they did not feel that they did as well as they would like to have done, they have the opportunity to not have that included on a transcript. And it would not be used as because there, there's so this such a limited administration here, it would not be used as part of a course grade.
Even if it helped them?
Well, that 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 has to be worked out at the at the high school level at this point. And they haven't really gone there yet because they want to see what happens with this waiver. They are, obviously, they're thinking about it, and obviously, we need staff input here. But the idea is not to put students in a situation where they can be hurt by this in any way, shape, or form.
That's the first priority, definitely. Okay.
But to still understand that they will be, they they still have to continue working diligently and that they will be certainly accountable for doing the work in the course that earns them that grade at the end of the course.
Right, because you, as you said, course credit is based on the work that you do in the course. So the course credit is passing the class by your rates.
Now, a question came up, and it's an easy one to answer. Well, if the federal government doesn't approve that using the exam as part of the course or using the exam on a transcript, how do you know you can do that? It is not a federal requirement to include a Regents exam. That is a New York State thing. It's not a federal requirement to, and it's a law. To include a regents exam, that is a New York State thing, it's not a federal requirement to, and it's a local decision and. Really to, to use the regents exam as part of a, part of a course grade. And it makes sense under normal circumstances, but these are far from normal circumstances.
Okay, any questions from, from the other?
Nothing to prove there, it's really just information.
If anyone had questions.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, that moves us to our Board of Education meeting calendar for next year's flight revision.
Very simple, and I should have looked at this before, I put the first calendar in front of you. My hope is that I will be able to get back to, next year I will be the. President-elect, the Suffolk County School Superintendent's Association, and my hope is that I will be able to get to the state conference in September. That it will be in person, and if that's the case, that is a weekend conference, and I would be coming back on Monday, the. Twenty-seventh, so, and I've done this before, and I should have. Caught it beforehand, but I'm asking the board to consider changing that September meeting to Tuesday. That's it.
Sorry, I lost my screen. That's a motion, right?
I'm looking at the public views, why don't see the motion?
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopts the attached revised public meeting calendar. For the 2021, 2022 school year. I have a motion from Bill, and then second. On paper. That's everybody.
Thank you.
And moving on to.
You know, one thing, one thing I missed, just going back to the assessments here, although it's not included as part of the regents examinations. The checkpoint A and checkpoint B, load examinations, languages other than English, when you notice, those would be.
Part of the exam that are offered.
Exam exemption.
Exemption, okay.
They'll, they'll be treated like regions exams, even though they're technically not.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, all right, let us take a breather for a moment, and this is why I moved the.
To give us an intermission, makes sense.
An intermission. You know, it's been, and Michelle mentioned this, Xavier mentioned this, it's been a pleasure to. To get the kids back involved in things that they enjoy doing, and my hope is we can continue building on that as time moves forward. But we do have a special production coming up this Thursday from our Family Drama Club. And they are excited to share just a teaser with the board and community this evening in the hopes that it will. Motivate people to sign on this Thursday. What a talented group, so. Grab your popcorn, make it a small bucket. All right, let me do it this way. No, bear with me for a second here.
Got it.
Whenever I see someone less fortunate as I. And let's face it, who isn't less fortunate as I? My tender heart tends to start to bleed. And when someone needs a makeover, I simply have to take over. I know, I know exactly what they need. And even in your case, though it's the toughest case I've yet to face. Don't worry, I'm determined to succeed. Follow my lead. And yes, indeed, you will be. Popular, you're gonna be popular. I'll teach you the proper voice when you talk to boys, the little ways to flirt and flatter. I'll show you both shoes to wear, how to fix your hair. Everything that really counts to be popular. I'll help you be popular. You'll hang with the record horse, you'll be good at sports, know the sign you've got to know. So let's start, 'cause you've got it all, you're the only one. Don't be offended by my frank analysis, think of it as personality dialysis. Now that I've chosen to become a policy officer and advisor, there's nobody wiser, not when it comes to. Popular, I know we're popular. And we open a system to be who you'll be, it's a dreamy world. Art is nothing that can stop you from becoming popular. Art. La la, la la. We're gonna make you popular. When I see depressing creatures with unbreakable, possessing features. I remind them on their own behalf to think of. Celebrated heads of state or specially bred communicators. Did they have brains or knowledge? Don't make me laugh. They were popular, please, it's all about popular. It's not about attitude, it's the way you're viewed, so it's very true to be. Very, very popular, like me. Know you protest your disinterest. I know clandestine. You're gonna grin and bear it, you're near from popularity. La la, la la. You'll be popular, it's not quite as popular as me.
So Thursday night, 7:00 PM. We will pop this one up on the website as well, but I'll make sure that we. Continue to market this throughout the week.
And the link will be on the banner, I assume, on Thursday, so we can easily click.
We'll get it into a place where people can, can access it multiple ways, but. Working really hard, they're thrilled to do this, and I know they're excited to have as many people on watching them as possible on Thursday night. They look like they're having fun. Okay. Okay. We have budget?
Yeah, because I keep getting stuff, yeah.
I see you strategically placed that to wake us up a little bit.
Yes, I moved it to, to, to do just that. Okay, so we are at the point, and, and again, many questions remain because we're still looking. To the state for additional information on revenues so we can finalize this budget, but. Again, a lot of people working very hard to get us to where we are today. Kathy certainly is a. A huge player in this, so I'd like to thank her for her efforts here, and I know he's not here, but he's, he's definitely watching this evening. Chris Hender and his efforts in terms of, of helping me sift through staffing and working with all of our buildings to ensure that. We know what we have and know what we need, know what we want. So his efforts have been instrumental as well, and this, this goes down to the building principals for just. Really looking very carefully at this from top to bottom, so thank you to them as well, so. With that said. So this is going to be an abbreviated first section here as compared to prior years, we're going to look very quickly at the 2000 series, which involves. All of the codes in the 2000 cost center related to curriculum and instruction. The best way to do this, and this is obviously going to be posted as well. Take a look at what's here, if you have questions, we will do our best to answer them. And obviously we have teaching uniforms here, our supervision is in here, so administrative costs are in here, our salaries are in here. Stipends are in here. Special education is in here. Belted is in here, and not a large portion of this, but it's there, special schools, in this case is summer school. Library, computer assisted instruction, the attendance offices, guidance. Nurses, health services, psychologists, social workers, clubs and activities, interscholastic athletics. Okay, so to look at this in the composite here. This in the past has been presented. One function code by one function code, function code by function code. You can take a look here at, at where we are, most of this is built in. Changes in salaries as per collective bargaining agreements. And some other pieces that, I know Kathy initially in the first go around with this budget. Had asked all of our budget managers to cut 10% of their supplies, so where you see reductions, that's a piece of it for sure. Things that stand out here, if anything, the occupational education. We do have a smaller number of students slated right now based on planning. To participate in tech programs that could change between now and the next few weeks, but based on the numbers we have, that budget is, that budget is accurate. Here's the second part of this, the second group of function codes. Things that stand out here. That first line, actually, it looks like there was no summer school in 2021, that is actually not the case. But instead of BOSI's billing us into this function code, they actually included it in the. Teaching regular school code, so for 2021, the actual didn't end up where it typically does. Which was not our doing.
And the co-curricular.
It's actually in this code right here, it's in teaching regular school.
I was just asking about the reduction in co-curricular, 22%, I was just wondering what it was.
That's the supplies, that's some of it, it's not program. What, what you don't see anywhere in, in these, in these numbers is cuts to staff or program. It is cuts to supplies that we may actually be able to, to, to restore, it's not a lot of money in the overall scheme of things, but depending on what revenues look like. If we can do this without impacting the tax levy, we will.
Contracted services are also included in that 10%, cut.
Contracted services as well as supplies, Cap?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The other big increase here, computer assisted instruction. We are still in a pandemic where we've had to do a lot of work in terms of, of devices, hardware and software, so that's why you see that. That. Actual for 1920, we had to do a lot of work last spring to make sure we had what we needed, and we did it quickly. And obviously, some of that is going to carry into 2122.
That's actual devices and things of that sort, not staff, right?
And Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason that we, we were able to manage it a little better in 2021 is because of all the work we did last spring.
It's correct.
Okay.
Does that include the bandwidth upgrade?
Yes. It has been an ongoing, and this is not, this is not going to stop anytime soon, we do have a little of the smart schools bond money in, in the mix here, but. We want to make sure that our devices are the ones that are needed by our children, we want to be able to provide. Hopefully the two for the kids K through three, because the transport, we think that, that actually savings in the long run, because if they continue to bring them back and forth, they're going to break. But we've been able to, we've, we've been able to stay ahead of the technological curve.
Yeah, that also includes all, all the software we use, and we're using a lot, a lot of different software this year.
So Jim, do, do we, I forget what we did last summer, because everybody had a device, then did we. Have kindergarten through sixth grade return them for the summer, and then the. Middle school and high school kids kept them, or do we, does everybody return them? Do they need to be, I would imagine that there's more wear and tear because they're using them more frequently.
Yeah, there are some that are slated for replacement, it's a staggered. It's kind of an incremental replacement, so some are new within others, if, if they're, if they're going to be replaced, we're going to want them back, but. If, if children are going to be in the same building, and Kathy, you know, that, I know Mary Beth does most of this work.
Right now, we're planning on having the students keep them, and then when they return, we'll, we'll be cycling in some new sets. But we don't want to, but we figured they're going to be using them during the summer. And we still will supply that technical support to the families throughout the summer.
Oh, great, okay.
And the benefit of the Chromebooks as opposed to iPads or, or laptops is the Chromebooks are vessels to get at what we provide. As far as it's, it's, it's more of a means to access the things that would be available via any device, and not worried about something on their hard drive in the Chromebook. It's how they can access the things that we are able to provide for them. And thanks to Beth and Kathy, Mary Beth, Robinette. Our principals and, and, and others in, in district, our software capabilities have. Expanded considerably, and the fact that we have as much bandwidth as we do at this point, we are capable of doing just about anything here.
And if kids want to go in the summer on clever and play educational games, more power to them, it's both.
Absolutely, for sure.
Are we anticipating more students attending summer schools that wide, that increase?
I, well, if we go back to face to face, the price goes up dramatically, so I have to budget for that. And if we turn that, because no, no decision.
Right, so if I look back to 1920, yes.
Virtual is about $50,000 less.
Right, okay.
That has not yet been, we, we don't run summer school here, it's a Western Suffolk BOSI's program. You know, but obviously, we, we want to provide opportunities for students who need it and, and possibly students who want it. With that said, which has nothing to do with this per se, but just a reminder that. The summer arts program is going to run here, and we also have another enrichment program that we, a STEM enrichment program that we are, we are working on as well. We're going to open that up to, to students from. Multiple grade levels.
Great, that'll be a great sign.
Okay, so bottom line here, as you're talking about, about a 1% increase as it currently stands. Alright, so let's move into staffing. I'm going to move quickly here because it's, it's a, it was actually not the most challenging process, and that's, I'm not complaining about that. But there will be some decisions we may be able to make moving forward, so let me just go through this. And, and again, these are slides you've seen before in one way, shape or form, we look at administrative staff, we look at elementary, we look at secondary, we look at non-instructional. At this point, there are no proposed changes to our administrative personnel. Elementary. Based on March enrollments. I actually took out the elementary cap guidelines because we're not even looking at them at this point, our class sizes are not going to approach those numbers. But just so you know, these are not, this is not board policy, but this is something the board determined years ago that we'd. Use that as a benchmark threshold. And at this point, with all of the ground that has to be made up to have kindergarten class of 25 students in it, it's not what we're looking for. Enrollment projections, grade level sections, obviously we review that into the summer in case enrollments are, are changing, new students come in. Students may leave, and we are going to hold the elementary class placement, I know I did push for that to happen before the school year ended. And then the, the principals made a, a very strong case and, and provided strong reasoning for keeping it in August because too many things change over the summer, and, and that makes. Sense at this point, so we're going to continue with that. And then just by building, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these slides, they, they are going to be posted for people to look at. But again, what it does for each building, it shows the. Current enrollment, primary schools, general and dual language, and how those sections play out, and you'll notice at Flower Hill. 12 and 12, the numbers are very similar from one year to the next. Jefferson. 1414. Southbound. 1414. Washington. 1616. You can see why this was about as painless as a staffing presentation can get. Jack Abrams. Questions have come up, when will the selections be sent out? When will the notices be sent out? They will be sent out very shortly. Again, I anticipate. I'm thanking the community for their response. The students who requested at this point will get what they are looking for, and that's what we aim to do. But with that said, 1818. 1818. It's always nice when the numbers work out. That makes this slide work very cleanly.
Jim, no sixth grade dual language next year?
So there, I'm glad you asked that, Linda. The, there, there is no dual language in the sixth grade. Dual language in its traditional structure ends after fifth grade. What was established this year was a bilingual class, not a dual language. So that's why the BL is there. It was a bilingual class, and the problem with that is we anticipated more students coming in. It didn't happen. So the enrollment for the other sections, the average was, was much higher. We may go back to that if the enrollment goes up. But at this point, we don't want to commit to it unless we have the enrollment. We don't want there to be a discrepancy between that one class and all the others. So we're hedging our expectations there in the event that there aren't enough. It'll just be 24 across six sections as opposed to 28 and five sections and 15 and one. So that's not a dual language section per se. It's a bilingual class.
Right, and they'll get their Spanish during the wheel?
Well, yeah, the, this, this doesn't go into language choices or that, that sixth grade language piece for those coming out of the, those that have graduated from the dual language program.
Right, because now they'll lose a lot of ground if they're away from.
Correct, but that, that bilingual section has nothing to do with the language wheel or the
Right.
The regions, the checkpoint B course, all the regions, the FLB course in grade six. But thank you for bringing that up because I passed it. Okay, and again, elementary overall. Integrated a net of plus one. And again, this is just where the, where the kids are going to be placed based on IEPs. And that is actually balanced out by a net minus one in special class. This can change if students come in. Obviously, some of these numbers are going to be fluid until
Completion of annual reviews.
Completion of annual reviews. Thank you. Other elementary faculty projections. Again, as it stands, not particularly exciting. Let's move on to secondary, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about where we go from here. Projections based on course registrations to date. Most of them are complete. We don't expect a great deal of movement, but we're obviously watching as time goes on. Finley enrollment anticipated. High school enrollment anticipated. Okay, there's a couple of anomalies here, but you can see where the pieces are most significant. And now, again, some of these pieces, particularly in the area of special education could change. The I can go through this really, really quickly. So the reduction of a point one in art, that had more in line with travel periods, teachers that are at the elementary level. We do have an increase in the number of ENL students coming from sixth grade into Finley, which is why you see the one point code there at Finley. We have a reduction or increase in health of point one and a reduction in point one PE that actually balances out because duly certified teacher can flip between health and PE, which is why that flexibility is quite beneficial. Reduction of point three in math due to a section collapsing of algebra trig. The result of a 1.0 decline at FMS, Finley Middle School. Says FMS on my page is really just due to the IEPs number of students that are going to be at a particular grade level. The minus point six at the high school is the alternate educational setting. This is really not impacting special ed at all, but that's just where we budgeted that money. That program has not taken hold this year primarily because of the pandemic. And the teacher who was highly promising in terms of helping us grow that program, she left last year. So that program is not currently in the budget. And we have not been able to grow it primarily because of the limited circumstances we have, the circumstances limited by the pandemic. The tech point two is actually for woodshop at the high school, and world languages reflects the number of Spanish sections going up. And the point two coming from Woodhall Finley as a result of the change in the language program there. So there are explanations behind each one of these numbers. Net change overall is a minus point six. And that's reflected here as well. In terms of non-instructional. Basically, basically flat. One teaching assistant, and that is not a person being lost. That's a person that is retired, no longer on staff. And that could change as well based on annual reviews and IEPs. So what you're looking at is, is really not that overwhelming, very little movement from 2021 to 2122. We do have five contingent teaching positions. Three aid positions contingent and two teaching assistant positions. Those can be used. They can be interchangeable. They can be used as needed. And I do want to point out that one of the things that we anticipate at this point is if that, well, increased revenue, if we do have if we do have that revenue coming in, and it's not going to impact the tax levy, we have it coming in from other sources. Some of the things that we are potentially thinking about. And this is not an exhaustive list, but just something to keep in mind. We are looking at possibly further augmenting our E and L staff, the elementary level. There is going to be a discussion presentation made to the board, one of the upcoming meetings on restructuring the algebra program in eighth grade to help make up some lost ground. That is actually built into this, this presentation. But we might also wish to include an additional set of lab sections at the middle school. Whether that's a point three, point two, point three, point four, that's something we would consider. Mr. Graber mentioned mental health. That is something that is on the table as well. I happen to agree with him. If, you know, obviously, we can't, we need the, the teachers in the classroom. But mental health is an area that is not going to, to, to be associated with a reduction in need anytime soon. We have a half time counselor at grade six who has really grown into the position. She's working extraordinarily hard. It has to move with a halftime position between two buildings. So there's been some discussion about if not next year, maybe moving forward, expanding that guidance council. And the other thing, and honestly, there's a lot of question marks here in terms of what happens, what is the pandemic going to lead to in September? And we've learned, if we could start over again, we may have looked at certain things a little bit differently, but the idea of starting the year if needed with fully virtual teachers as opposed to a hybrid. Just providing an opportunity for grade level classes that cut across district primary schools at a particular grade level, if the interest is there, just to leave that open as a possibility, whether it be from contingent positions or from the additional revenue that may, that may surface. So we're not done yet. So this, this budget does not include these things, but may include additional requests moving forward. If we can certainly, if we can handle them, there are things that we'd like to do. There are things that we we borderline need to do. Some of them we will need to do. So that said, this is draft three. So this is where we were back on March 15th, a whole week ago today.
Feels like longer.
It does. We were 920,000 short of the levy limit budget. Or should I say 920 over the levy limit budget and change? Since that time, Kathy's been carving, and obviously, our goal here is not to touch program and to keep our staff in good working order. So you see the, all of the numbers are savings except the one at the end. I am going to ask the board for permission to include in the budget an increase to our substitute pay to start with for teachers, because we'd like to remain competitive in that respect. And I believe what we're looking for here is an increase $15 per day for per diem and $15 per day for our daily recurring. So both of those rates would go up.
That sounds like a great idea.
Honestly, we want to be able to recruit as needed. We, we've, we've held our own here, but it's, it's tough to find substitute teachers these days. So that savings reflects all of those savings plus the one additional expense.
And those daily recurring, like similar to student teachers can turn out to be full-time teachers.
We, we have.
A great way to recruit, yeah.
It, it does work sometimes, absolutely. If they put their best foot forward and then they, they show that they really are a good fit in Huntington, that's, that's what happens.
Well, also, it just, it just makes sense because of the feeling of being part of a faculty instead of, you know, a substitute that's just there occasionally.
Yeah.
Being a part of the team always helps.
There are some other things we're looking at in terms of the way the, the, the pay is structured for those that come on as leave replacements so that we can, we can secure folks who are always high quality. And then we've been very fortunate here. This year, we've been able to bring in some good people, but we always want that available to us. So this is where we are today. With, with that 410,000 and change savings, we are 509,652 away from the levy limit. That's not a, the levy limit is not the final resting point, but it is, you know, it's what we look at because we obviously are not going to be in a position where we need a super 60% super majority approval of a budget.
It feels more within reach.
It is within reach. There are your budget to budgets and estimated tax increases. And that's not with touching revenues at this point, or obviously, you can see the revenue sheet in the budget draft, which is posted publicly. Depending on what happens over the next couple of weeks. Revenues can change. That would impact the tax levy possibly in a positive direction, meaning people would pay less and the revenue would come from other sources, which would certainly reduce the budget to budget may look like it does, but the tax rate increase would be potentially less than that.
Right.
Or the budget, or the budget to budget can go down. There's, there's decisions that will have to be made here. And right now, just to go back to this for a second, we are, we are predicating all of our estimates, and just to point this out, because we have this conversation every year of a flat assessed valuation from 2021 to 2122, just based on what's happening with Long Island properties and our pilots have not done anything drastic, knock on wood. So we just didn't feel a need to, to reduce that, and I wouldn't advise increasing it at this point. So that's why your tax levy increase and tax rate increase are matching because the assessed valuation is where we're, we're estimating it to be flat at this point. If the assessed valuation goes down, our tax rate increase is going to go up. If assessed valuation goes up, our tax rate increase is going to go down. Okay, so there's your summative piece. Proposition one is our budget. Proposition number two will be our capital prop. And I believe that's our next item on the agenda. So before we get to that, I figured it might be a nice thing to do to refresh and to, to lay it out there so we know what, what's in front of the board at this point. So as discussed last week, partial roof replacement, I had mentioned, and this is at the advice of SED and council to, to package these by building, the parking lot, the gym bleachers, the gym hallway flooring, the replacement, any abatement and replacement of flooring, that is about $10,000 Kathy, as part of that, and that's in there so we can get aid on the other two pieces.
Exactly. This qualifies us for the.
Just call, if, if that wasn't there, we don't get the, the 40% back on the parking lot.
Which on that number is significant. It didn't change the numbers from last week.
I meant the 40% is a significant number because the number is.
Absolutely.
And the parking lot was broken into one, two, and three, right?
Right, so this, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Linda. This actually includes one and two.
One and two, right?
One and two. So the only piece it doesn't include is the piece in the back by the gym.
Right, okay.
But that would be slated for a future, future consideration, and the boilers at Jefferson we talked about last week. And this is really, we're not leaving anything in the reserves on the table because now we do anticipate some of our current projects will return based on some of the economies of scale and cost savings that come about because we negotiate well. But on paper right now, with use of 3.525 million, it leaves us with a whopping $271 combined out of all three existing building improvement funds. It's there. We want to use it.
Won't spend it in one place.
And that's what we have moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody good? All right.
Then we can move to next item.
Okay, bear with me for a second. Let me shut this down.
Can't move on my screen at all.
Stop sharing here. Something I didn't do earlier, which I'm going to do now. My screen just froze. Somebody not in the room, just, just in case. Alex probably saved me a few weeks ago, saved us a few weeks ago.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I just can't move forward ever. I don't know why.
Okay.
Right, we just went over it. You don't want to go over it again, right?
Actually, that's correct. I just did it.
No, and I'm trying to get on my screen to the resolution because every time it keeps happening to me.
Resolution is likely, you can't read the whole thing. But it does outline the actual proposition that would be on a, you're talking about the motion.
Motion, yeah. Can I just make a general motion to approve this?
Xavier has it up. He can read it. Board docs?
Why don't you read it?
Well, not, not the resolution, but the, the
The motion.
Motion from board docs.
Because I can't get on my screen. Yeah, go ahead and make the motion. It's all right.
I don't have the motion. It just says request to review and adopt.
Yeah, that's the same thing I have, but no.
Anybody have it in, in board view?
It did, but it froze.
No, 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 just the, what's in, what's in the action box?
Want to read it, Bill?
I got it.
Oh, David's got it.
It's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, review and adopt the capital proposition as delineated for May 18th, 2021 ballot, allowing district residents to vote on use of existing monies within the districts 2008, 2013, and 2017 building improvement capital reserve funds.
Okay, you have a motion?
That's Linda, and the second from Kelly. Questions, comments? We already made ours.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I think we beat that one up pretty good last.
That's everyone. Can't hear you, Bill. What'd you say?
I think we beat that one up pretty good last week.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And for those interested, the actual proposition is in that, is in the resolution.
Yeah, okay. Now I'm back in the screen so I can read the policy.
All right, so all of these policies are second reads. I did pull one off because it's still under review. And one I updated. I'll, I'll explain that when we get to it. So you can, you can start here.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, adopt revised policy 1270 absentee ballots. They have a motion. So, and a second from Xavier.
This is again about the military. This is again about the military ballot process.
Okay. Anybody have questions, comments?
All in favor?
Everybody. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education adopt revised policy thirteen thirty. Appointments and designations by the Board of Education. A motion please. Motion Linda and a second from Michelle. Anybody have a comment? All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education adopt revised policy sixteen twenty annual organization meeting. A motion. Kelly and a second from Xavier. Comments? All in favor? That's everybody. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education adopt new policy fifty six thirty three. Gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms. Have a motion. From Kelly and a second from Linda. Comments, questions? All in favor? That's everybody.
Kathy, we're working on signage there?
Yeah, we're almost done.
Okay, great.
Changed outdoor handles and signage.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy fifty six eighty one school safety plans. I have a motion.
Motion.
From Michelle and a second.
Second.
Linda.
Okay, before you vote on this. Okay, I have to find it. And of course, now I'm not going to be able to find it. It was in.
There wasn't red on the other page that one.
No, that this has basically been revised.
Looks like it just adds.
Oh, here it is. It's it's where it says. New line. This is the only piece that was changed from the prior policy. From a prior version of this, protocols responding to a declared state disaster emergency. That initially said public health emergency. I changed that since the last meeting. We we looked at this, and that is at the recommendation of of the state, actually. Because it goes beyond just public health. It's a declaration of disaster across the state.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy sixty four sixty nine. Use of email in the district. A motion please. From Kelly and a second. From Linda.
All right, so before. Will you vote on this? This this policy has been changed since the first read. There are things that just didn't need to be in it. It's been further vetted.
Just a question. There is a page two, letter D, and it's blank. Is it just a typo? Assume that's part of what was corrected.
I think it's this is.
No, I think that was something that was taken out and the D should be taken out as well, but I will confirm that. I am ninety nine percent sure that I took it out and I just left the the D in there inadvertently.
Think I remember what was there.
Yeah. And if it reads, if it if it reads acceptably at this point, I would say go ahead with it. We can always amend it.
Yeah, I mean, if we take, even if you take that.
There are other there are other changes that were made to this that just some of it was going to be very difficult. I I didn't mark it up further because it just would have confused the 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 matter, but it just, it would make it very difficult for us to follow through with certain things. And 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 really tax our text after the point where it wasn't necessary. So this this does what we needed to do in a manageable, in a manageable way. I will check that, but if it reads acceptably without, as it is, without D, I can pull D. It's immaterial and we need to look at it again. We can do so.
Everybody good?
Okay, all in favor?
And you can see actually the fact that there's a Google Docs number on the bottom. That's that's. Thoroughly reviewed by us and councils. That's actually council's number there. So they know. If they have to, if I reference it, they can go right back to it. Okay.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education adopt revised policy seventy four twenty. Sports and the athletic program. Have a motion. Xavier and a second from Kelly. Anything you want me to?
No, a lot of the policies in this batch were reflecting Title Nine, which we're probably going to have to go back. And review again very shortly.
Right.
I have a number of other policies I'm working on. I will just fair warning to the policy committee group, and I'm gonna have to drag you in again.
Right, so these are all, this is just.
Fifty six eighty one was the first in the new batch that I'm working on, and that I was able to change because it was a quick change. Some of the others I have to that. It's going to take me some time to go through, but I will pull you guys together as soon as I can.
Okay. All in favor? Bill, you got a hand?
Yes, I did.
Okay, that's everybody. And to Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve C S D, CPSC submissions as delineated.
I should have said before, this is the one that I was supposed to abstain from not last time, so I'm doing it this time. So can I have a motion? From Kelly. What?
You're a mess.
No, I just didn't know, so I wanted to be careful last time, and now I actually know. Okay, that's a motion from Kelly and a second. Second, and Michelle. All in favor? That is five and then me. Back to you, Mr. Polanski.
Okay, thank you. I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules three, five, eight, ten, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty two.
A motion?
Motion.
From Linda and a second. From Bill.
Just got nominated to second that one.
Just moving it along. All in favor? That's everybody.
She's keeping us on our toes. A couple of things here really quickly. We'd like to welcome to the district. Ms. Christina Speciale, who is going to be joining us as a teaching assistant at the elementary level. Also to Whitney Voyages, who is going to be moving up from her aid position into a teaching assistant position. Sophia Fazio has actually been with us for some time. She's done an outstanding job here as a lead replacement in several capacities. She has gone by Sophia Ramalakis as well, but we're happy to bring her on board as an E S L teacher. Actually, E N L teacher, I think the tenure area for New York State is E S L, but interchangeable. And I'd also like to. On schedule thirteen, there is an individual there of Kathy Henry has served as a. I think we certainly want to honor our retirees from last year and this year, but just a special mention of Kathy Henry, who has been a payroll supervisor here. For a very long time, has done a terrific job for us. She's a mainstay in Huntington, and she is. On her way to the next stage of of her health and happiness and personal life, and and we wish her the very best. She's retiring actually very shortly. And we welcome, I hope I get this right, Beata, because because Minsk clouder is our new payroll supervisor. Very knowledgeable, extraordinarily talented with the accounting end of things and a quick study. We we know she's going to do great things here as well, but. I would be remiss. We didn't wish Kathy a. On regards and and a fond farewell. She's done terrific work for a long time.
Congratulations to everyone. Great. Dr. Hacker.
Okay, is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through M. On this evening's business agenda.
And I have a motion please. Motion from Michelle and a second. And Linda. All in favor? Okay, to you, Mr. Paul.
We've just approved a few donations. I'll start with Miss Donna Benko is presenting a donation of a painting easel canvases, sketchbooks, and a paintbrush. Paint brushes to the Huntington High School Art Department. This donation has an approximate value of five hundred. Thank you, Miss Donna Benko. Miss Nancy Levine is presenting a donation of one LeBlanc Vito seventy two fourteen clarinet serial number A four three five oh six. And an M B T case to the Huntington High School Music Department. This donation has an approximate value of six hundred dollar. Thank you, Miss Levine. Miss Leah Van Horn is presenting a donation of several rolls of fabric and elastic to the Huntington High School Fashion Classes. This donation has approximate value of three hundred dollars. Thank you, Miss Van Horn. And finally, Miss Dorothy Wall is presenting a donation of the photography equipment listed below. Huntington High School's District Art and Music Departments. This donation has an possible value of nine hundred and ten dollars. Thank you, Miss Wall.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Also worthy of note, um, the business agenda tonight is. One year agreement with the Associated Teachers of Huntington. It's been a tough go in terms of. Just negotiating in general for all school districts under pandemic circumstances, but we are pleased to to have. Arrived at this agreement with them for twenty twenty one. So thank you to them. Thank you to the board.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our second public commentary.
Same. Stop sharing my screen.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were telling me to stop.
No, you keep going. I just need to.
Okay, same rules apply as the first public commentary, except that you may speak on any subject still with the restriction of no personnel. Names and no names of students. Please raise your electronic hand, and then if called on, identify yourself and your affiliation to the district. Okay. I don't see any hands, do you?
Nope.
Okay, that brings us to comments by board members. Anybody have a final word? Then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Xavier and a second from Michelle. All in favor? Thank you all for joining us. Thank you, everyone who was watching, and have a great night. Stay well.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.